I'd like to call the order. The Fridley Public Schools Business Meeting for Tuesday, December 19th, 2017. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll begin the meeting then with the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion by Riddle, seconded by Sampson, to approve the agenda for December 19th, 2017. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we will move on to the spotlight on recognition.
Tonight, I am going to relinquish this responsibility to Laura Seifert, who is going to make this special presentation.
Thank you, everyone. So, our Employee of the Month for December is Andrea Baker, and she was nominated by both myself and Stephanie Warner, who is one of our special education teachers. Andrea is our finance specialist. Andrea displays all the learner profile attributes and is a very supportive colleague. She has the best interest of students in mind while completing her job in an efficient manner. Specifically, she is so knowledgeable in her field, is a thinker, and does her job with a high level of integrity. She is one of those people you know will get the job done. Her knowledge of finance far exceeds anyone else that I have ever worked with, and this supports many of our programs and students. Her skills help make our special services department run smoothly and efficiently. She takes on more work to help others out and gets the job done. Bottom line is Andrea can figure out almost anything if it is good for our kids.
Awesome.
So, we are very proud to say that Andrea is our Employee of the Month for December.
Good job. Thanks, Laura. And congratulations to Andrea.
Nice.
Okay.
Next up, I have the privilege to recognize Marcia Lindblad for 12 years of service, and we have a special presentation for you tonight.
Oh.
I'm going to read this, and then I will hand it to you. It's a certificate of recognition. This certificate is presented to Marcia Lindblad in recognition of 12 years of excellent service to the State of Minnesota and Fridley Public School District School Board. Therefore, with appreciation and respect of the people of Minnesota, this certificate is presented to Marcia Lindblad. Her retirement date of December 31st, 2017. I have hereunto set my hand and caused the great seal of the State of Minnesota to be affixed at the Capitol in the city of St. Paul, December 4th, 2017. Mark Dayton, Governor.
Wow. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Look at that.
Very good.
Very nice.
Very nice.
I think it's suitable for framing.
I think so. Stand up.
You gotta stand up.
Gotta stand up. Great job.
Nice. Thank you. Well, thank you very much, and I have to say that it has been a real privilege to serve on the board these past 12 years. I've worked with wonderful board members, past and present, and I really feel honored to have been part of this group. We've got a great community, great administration, staff, and families, so thank you very much.
I'd just like to say thank you, Marcia. You were a longtime leader on the board before I joined, and so played a good role in mentoring and teaching me about board role as I became new. And something I've always appreciated about you is just your steadfast manner, as well as the care that you have for the kids. Your focus is always on what is it like for the families of our students and our students who attend our school, and that shows through in all of your conversations, and I think you can see that in the work that's been done during your time.
Thanks, Mary Kay. I appreciate that.
I think, too, her first entering into this was levy that she agreed to kind of chair, and that was right before she decided to run for the school board, and so that kind of kicked her career off. But I believe there were probably mini PTA, PTO meetings prior to that, as she just received her son's screening reports that Jeanette found for her in the archives of the world, so.
It was the, like, early childhood screenings for our three boys, when oldest one was almost four and the twins were four, so kind of fun to look back. But I did have the great fortune of serving as co-chair of one of the referendums, and we had six weeks to put a program together, and was happy to say with all of our hard work of community members, parents, staff, that it did pass, so thank you very much.
Great.
Okay, superintendent and staff reports, financial audits.
We're up with...
So, tonight, we have Bergen KTV, Matt Mayer from Bergen KTV. He's joining us via phone to present our 1617 financial audit results. And with that, Matt, can you hear me?
I can. Fine, thank you. Appreciate it, Matt. Madam Chair, members of the board, appreciate the opportunity to present the results of the audit for 2016-17. The district has the responsibility, Chair, to prepare financial statements for the public, and our job as your auditors is to test, examine, and give an opinion on those so that users of them can be assured that they are an accurate presentation of the district's financial position. We issued four reports this year as part of our audit. The first of those reports is an independent auditor's report, which provided an unmodified or clean opinion. That's the best we can give you, so that means that the numbers we're looking at tonight are a true and accurate picture of the district's financial results and financial health. We also did a single audit, and this year tested the child nutrition program for compliance with the federal guidelines related to that program, and happy to report no findings there. Looking at internal control, we had just one finding related to lack of segregation of accounting duties. That's a comment that the district has seen in the past. The details are in the materials that we provided, but we believe that the district has reason to mitigate its controls for that particular issue. And then finally, we performed a Minnesota legal compliance audit, and that was to ensure that you're in compliance with all the statutes that are out there associated with running a school district, and happy to report no findings there. So, a very clean audit for the 1617 fiscal year. Our thanks to Director Hammer and his team for their work in preparing for us, and the process went very smoothly this year, as it has in years past. I want to spend just two or three minutes to give you some perspective on how the year went financially for the district, and I want to do that in the context of your budget. The budget that you as a board approved called for $41.2 million in revenue, $41 million in spending, a transfer out of $561,000, and a spend down of fund balance or use of fund balance of about $287,000. If we look at the actual results, revenue came in a little bit better than anticipated, about $776,000, higher than budget. State special education aid was the main component of that, and you came up better than anticipated there. Expenditures were right on. They were a little bit over budget, $26,000, but on a $41,000 budget, that's only 6/100 of 1%. So, the total fund balance went up $440,000 for the year, but I'm going to take you to Slide 12 in my presentation, which shows the results of operations for the general fund. Well, we had a total increase in fund balance. Many of, much of that increase actually occurred in the set aside category that the district maintains. If you look at the chart on Page 12, you'll see restricted fund balance is representing a certain portion of fund balance. That's an amount that the state requires you to set aside, and then you also have an assigned fund balance for internal priorities, like severance payments, capital projects and the like. What's left over is that unassigned fund balance, the second line from the bottom, and that's the number on which you evaluate your financial health. You have a goal of having between 7% and 10% of unrestricted expenditures in that unassigned amount for 2016-17. That was about a 7.3% number after being at about 7.5% the prior year. So, you are within the parameters that you've established for yourself as far as financial health goes, just a little bit over that minimum threshold of 7%. You'll see the unassigned amount did go up, what, $9,000 this year, but in proportion to the spending that occurred in the general fund, the actual percentage of fund balance did go down. I want to take a quick look at your two other operating funds to wrap things up. The food service fund has had surpluses each of the last three years and ended the year with a positive fund balance of about 25% of the year's worth of spending, so that fund is very healthy and in good shape. And to wrap things up, the community education fund is the last one we'll look at. This fund, too, has had surplus each of the last three years, but the improvement in this fund is actually more remarkable in that you had deficit financial position in this fund going back just two years ago in 2015. You were able to come out of that through operations, ensuring that you had operating surplus each of the last couple of years, and as a result of that, each of the different programs, whether it be your ECFB, your community ed, your school readiness, all of them had positive fund balances to end 2016-17. So, just to wrap things up, a very clean audit from a report standpoint. We talked about there, most unmodified reports, and then as far as the district's financial health goes, very comfortable fund balances in both community ed and also in food service, and your fund balance in the general fund is within the parameters that you set, maybe on the low end of those, close to the 7% and the 10%, but still certainly within the thresholds that you've established for yourself for financial health. So, I will leave it at that and be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Matt, this is Mary Kay Delville. Can you tell us, what is, from an auditing perspective, what is a recommended fund balance percentage? Is there a guide on what that percentage should be?
There really is not. That is a policy decision, and we're just happy that the board has established that policy. Basically, it's a, again, a decision that you as a board can make, and we just recommend that once it's established that you monitor toward that. I think the policy that you have in place is certainly reasonable, and it's in line with many of the other metro districts that we see. Just understand that fund balance is there for two purposes. One is for cash flow, to ensure you have enough in the bank to pay the bills and make the payroll every few weeks, and the other is to act as a rainy day fund or a contingency just to make sure in case anything unexpected occurs that you can utilize fund balance to kind of weather the storm. So, if you believe that a 7% to 10% policy is reasonable based on the advice you're getting from administration, I think it is right in line with what I'm seeing, and I think it will meet your goals going forward.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Fridley Public Schools Taxes Payable in 2018 and Facilities Update. Matt? Move to the podium.
Oh, this is serious.
Okay. So, this is just a review of our, earlier tonight, there was a public hearing for our Truth in Taxation hearing, and we're going to summarize some of the highlights of what was prepared for our public hearing at 7:00 this evening. So, if we start out, the agenda for the hearing basically covered a little bit of an overview on state funding of schools, information on district budget. Districts proposed pay 18 tax levy, and then was, had room for questions, and certainly if anybody has questions on their tax statement as it relates to the school section, you'll feel free to call me. My information will be at the end of this presentation, and I'm willing to take any phone calls or comments on that as the Finance Director for the school district. So, overall, our district budget is broken down into several funds. The general fund makes up the vast majority of our overall budget and where our unrestricted funds reside. There's other funds, what I consider other non-major funds, food service, our community ed or community service fund, our building construction fund, which houses all of our construction bonds and capital projects levy funds. Our debt service fund is, which is where we pay for our ongoing fees through those bond proceeds, and as we pay those bonds over time, that's where our debt service levy resides, and those payments are, come through. Our internal service funds, which is where our self-insured medical and self-insured dental accounts reside, and our OPEB trust and OPEB debt service. This is an overall look. This is our, this is a report that is by statute in Minnesota is required after our audited financials are approved by the school board. This information will be out on our website. It just gives you an overall look from a required look that the state puts together to give a outlook on where our 1617 results ended, but also our 1718 budgets as we go forward and where we project fund balance to be at the end of 1718. Overall, revenues, this is a breakdown of our overall revenues for all funds, albeit general fund makes up a vast majority, 81% of all revenues flow through the general fund. The other non-major funds have each of smaller percentages. Our general fund revenues, here's a breakdown. 82% of our aid comes from the State of Minnesota. 12.6% is made up of local property taxes. This is the portion of revenue that we're talking about tonight as part of our tax levies. And then other pieces are our federal aids, which are, only make about 3%, and then other local, which is fees, activity fees. Miscellaneous donation revenue makes up another 2%. Overall, the general fund expenditures for 1718 are projected to be $43,631,000 at the time of adoption back in June. Roughly 80% of those funds are targeted into the classroom, so if you start on the bottom right with the biggest portion in regular instruction, and you go left all the way to pupil support services, that portion of expenditures makes up 80% of our overall general fund expenditures, which is a number we strive to keep consistent from year to year as a district. Our general fund expenditures by object, this is a look at, the main thing to look at here is most of our general fund budget is accounted for in salaries and employee benefits. Roughly 75% of our overall general fund budget is made up with people. We're in a people business, and that's the vast majority of those expenditures, with other major portion is purchased services, and the largest piece of that is transportation. So, overall, taxpayers have received their taxpayer notices, and it's just important to know that the basis of these tax statements are going to differ from person to person, especially as market values change. So, every owner received a property tax for their various taxing jurisdictions, so you'll notice that there's county, city, school district taxes on that statement. We're the second column down on that statement. This is just a look at an example statement. It's not one specific to our district. So, overall, our tax levy for pay 18 went up 7.7%. So, from proposed property tax levy 17 to proposed tax levy, or for tax levy 18, our levy went up $750,000 overall. State law requires that we give the reasons for why and where those major changes are. This is just a breakdown of the general fund, our community service fund, debt service, and then our breakdown of voter and other levies as we look at it. So, overall, our general fund levy, the largest component of increase resides in a new levy category that was established by the State of Minnesota three years ago. It's been phasing in over a period of time from FY pay 16, and will completely be phased in with this pay 18 levy. So, starting in pay 16, districts were entitled to an allocation of $193 per pupil. This fiscal year, projecting out for revenue that we will receive in 2018, districts had a max allocation of $380 per pupil to account for long-term facility maintenance in your district. This levy changes with the age of your facility, so if your facilities are over 35 years of age, the portion of this levy that you can have increases from district to district. It also phases out our old health and safety program, so roughly $136,000 of this increase is the phasing out of our health and safety program, which resides now here, so that accounts for some of that $266,000 increase. On the instructional lease side, the vast majority of this increase comes from our 916 joint, our intermediate membership. 916 has the authority to levy for lease for facility improvements and building at the 916 member district. Currently, the $66,000 increase mostly comes from the addition of Poncalo Education Center and also a education center in Stillwater that was built. Our prior year levy adjustments, so as we look at the levy as a whole, levies are determined right now, we're looking at our levies based on our 2000, we're forecasting our enrollment for 2018-19. Back in 2016, we were projecting our levy, our enrollment for 2016. Those adjustments are now flowing through. We had some increase in enrollment at that time that we underprojected enrollment back in 16, so it's accounting for some adjustment here that is coming through. But a bigger portion of this actually is, as the state went through and made some changes in the pay 15 levy to account for modifications to the overall levy formula, there was a miss of about $30 per student that happened back in 16, and we're seeing that flow through now in our pay 18 levy, which is going to be a portion of that 106,000, $84,000 of that 106,000 is an error that the State of Minnesota made in our projections back in 2016. Our debt service, and we'll get through this with future slides, overall, our debt service levy was pretty flat. The voter-approved portion went up $172,000, which accounts for increases in our principal and interest payments, but as part of that, there's another debt service levy piece on the other side where we had an abatement bond increase that happened to pay for some parking lots in this last fiscal year. This is going to be offset by a reduction in debt excess. So, over the last few years, we've done some refunding on some of our bond issuances, which has saved on our overall debt service levy. So, as part of that, there's a formula that goes into play that the state accounts for 105% of your overall principal and interest payments, and as part of that process, we have, we're reducing our debt excess calculation by $391,000, which in essence makes our overall debt service levy going up about a half a percent in total. So, again, this is a look at a history from 2015 to 2018 on a projection based on different property values. So, as we look at this chart, we're taking this chart and looking at it assuming that market values have not adjusted at all. With that being said, that's not the case this year. On average, property values in the district of Fridley have went up 8% to 9%, and even more in some cases. So, this chart takes a look, if we take a look at the second line down, $150,000 home, overall taxes from the increase in our levy are going up on average about $10. If we look at that and we account for the increases that have taken place from pay 17 to pay 18 on average, taxes for homes have went over, the last three years have went up about 16.6%. So, if we account for that same $150,000 home last year, it would have been worth about $140,187. We roll that forward to this year, it's worth about $150,000. So, if I take a look at that $10, if I would take a look at your home was worth $140,000 last year, worth $150,000 this year, your taxes would have went up about $80 in that scenario. So, it's important, as you look at your tax statement, to make sure that we account for the market value increase when we look at overall increase. This is a look at, again, this is assuming no increase on property values, and it's fairly flat from the standpoint of if we look over 2015 to 2018, what we're estimating. So, from 2017 on $150,000 home to 2018, it's about a $10 increase just from the increases from the levy, not accounting for market value adjustment. So, again, there's a lot of things that change your individual property tax statement. Changes in total value are a big key driver this year, as most counties are making large market value adjustments as the economy has changed in their eyes, and those increases are going to cause changes from numerous factors, changes in our funding formulas, but also from our local needs as well. So, are there any questions on this? Again, my information is right there if anybody has any questions.
I think you gave a very thorough and easy-to-understand report, so I appreciate because this is really complicated stuff for people. Can you help just to connect the reality of what this means to people's lives? So, the changes that we've seen in the parking lots, in the drop-offs for parents at the middle school, some of those things, they're all the direct impact of the numbers you're talking about here?
Yes. Yeah, so the bond issuance we did in 2015 and those increases that happened back as a result of the positive referendum vote that we had that allowed us to obtain $27.5 million in 2015 for construction that's been in a three-year phase and is going to continue this next summer at our FCC, our high school and our middle school, is a direct result of the public support for our facilities and our school district as a whole.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate that. Okay, business action items. Well, look at here. We have Matt again. Can you help just to connect the reality of what this means to people's lives? So the changes that we've seen in the parking lots, in the, in the drop-offs for parents at the middle school, some of those things, they're all the direct impact of the numbers you're talking about here.
Yes, yes. So the bond issuance we did in 2015 and those increases that happened back as a result of the positive referendum vote that we had that allowed us to obtain twenty-seven and a half million dollars in 2015 for construction that's been in a three-year phase and is gonna continue this next summer at our FCC, our high school and our middle school, is a direct result of the public support for our facilities and our school district as a whole.
Thank you. I bring that up just because sometimes it's really easy to get mired in the dollars and just look at, oh, it went up again. And I mean, I'm a taxpayer too and I understand how that works, but to see how that's playing out in the lives of the, the students at our school, when we see the kitchen remodeling at the middle school and, I mean, have heard nothing but phenomenal remarks from the users of those facilities. So I just wanted to make that, that connection.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate that.
Okay, business action items. Well, look at here, we have Matt again. Tax levy final certification of pay eighteen levy.
I move to approve the tax levy final certification of pay eighteen.
Second.
Then a motion by Sampson, seconded by Prueito, to approve the tax levy final certification of pay eighteen levy. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank Matt for his ongoing leadership and I also want to acknowledge the, the hard work of the leadership in addressing some of the issues in the community ed area and also with food service.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, the fact that they've been able to turn around their budget really helps to ensure that those groups are self-sufficient so that money doesn't need to be diverted from the general fund to support those areas.
Great job.
And thanks to all the hard work.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next item is approval of the 2016, 17 audit report.
Move to approve.
I'll second it. It's been a motion by Sampson, seconded by Delvo, to approve the 2016, 17 audit report. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next is a motion to request to advertise for bids.
So tonight, we're requesting the authority to go out and request bids for our parking projects for this coming summer in 2018. We'll be working with Larson Engineering and hopefully it will be out to bid sometime in January of this fiscal year.
Who's to approve?
Second.
Who's second?
Yes.
It's been a motion by Sampson, seconded by Thornton, to approve the request to advertise for bids. Any discussion? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we have a resolution accepting gifts. And once again, Fridley Schools are the recipients of gifts from our community members and we always pass by a resolution. The following persons donated to Hayes Elementary School, winter jackets and gift cards. David D. Jarnett, six winter coats. Fridley United Methodist Women, six hundred and fifty dollar in gift cards to Walmart and Hy-Vee. Darrell and Janet Galbach, four hundred and seventy-five in gift cards to Walmart. The following persons donated to the Fridley Band Program for a total of seventy dollars. Carolyn Nolan and an anonymous donor. The following persons donated to the kids from Fridley Program for a total of one hundred dollars and that is the St. Williams Seniors.
Move to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions.
Second.
It's been a motion by Riddle, seconded by Prueito, to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions. Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Now, we have another resolution. It's the consolidated polling place at Fridley Community Center.
Yeah, in your packet is the entire resolution and basically this is the same as we did last year in for the election, which was a combined polling place. We need to do this on an annual basis. So the twelve precincts will come together in one polling place, which is then at Fridley Community Center.
I move to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion by Prueito, seconded by Thornton, excuse me, to approve the resolution for an established combined polling place for the twelve precincts in Fridley. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Next motion is for the second reading and adoption of policies. Matt?
So there are no changes from last reading. This policy, we're updating for statute and practice.
Move to approve the second reading of policy four twelve.
Second.
It's been a motion by Riddle, seconded by Prueito, to accept the second reading and adoption of policy four twelve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we have our consent agenda. This includes minutes of the school board business meeting and work session held on November twelfth, or excuse me, November twenty-first, 2017, monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absence, terminations, resignations, and retirements, and the approval of the 2018, 19 high school registration handbook.
I'll make a motion to move that for the consent agenda.
I will second that.
It's been a motion by Prueito, seconded by Delvo, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that Terry Reeser, our longtime special education coordinator, will be retiring in June and she's been with the district for over thirty-one years now and we certainly thank her for all the good work she has done for us.
She did a lot with the after-school programs, I think. So over the years.
And the summer programs.
A lot of leadership.
She's done a lot of wonderful things for the district and the kids, so we thank you, Terry. Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we have written information. Peggy?
In your packet, you will see the December one enrollment data that we give you on a monthly basis. This data, we are looking at this very critically because January one's data will be here before you know it, but our next school board meeting, we will be taking a look at revised budget. My guess is that these numbers aren't gonna shift very much, what might, or the total number will, but we may adjust where they are in the grade levels. And so we will be taking a look at that very closely. And then obviously, from that, we will springboard into making budget assumptions for the following school year. So, you know, as we just approved the high school registration, we are getting geared up for the next school year in, in this mid-school year.
Okay, thank you. Reports from school board members. Association of Metropolitan, Metropolitan School Districts, the board meeting held on December first.
Neither Peggy or I were able to attend that as we were in teacher contract negotiations that day, so there is no report.
All right, well, thank you. The Northeast Metro nine sixteen board meeting was held on December sixth and I did attend that meeting. One of the things, presentations of the evening that was very interesting to me, it was titled, "Increasing the Performance in Younger Generations." And this is presented by one of the teachers and the principal from the career and technical center there. And they shared this new approach to career counseling to increase academic engagement and future planning in younger generations. And it revolves around something called the career tree. And it begins with students thinking, if they could get paid to do anything besides sleeping, you know, what, what would it be? And so they write down all these different ideas that they have. And then step two, after they have their list, would be to look at the kind of lifestyle they want to have as an adult. And this would be including like the kind of work schedule they want, the salary they want to make, if they want to do traveling in their future, hobbies they want to be able to maintain, and a prospective family structure. And then from there, they take the next step, which is they visit the career tree to see the different interests that they have and what they would do for an entry-level career, what they could do for a technical career in that field, and then what they could do for professional careers. And they research, they have fifteen minutes to do research on a particular job and this would include like their average pay, day-to-day duties, knowledge, or experience they need to have at job, and the type of hours they would work. And they just continue this whole process and keep narrowing things down until they decide on what they want to be when they grow up. So it's just a really good exercise and I think it'd be beneficial for every high school student to go through that.
So. I'd be interested in learning more about that.
What I want to be when I grow up. I ask myself that sometimes.
Yeah. Is there an age limit on that?
And Schools for Equity and Education meeting held December eighth.
Yes, I attended that along with Matthew. That was the presentation of the platform that will be, that Schools for Equity will put forward for the legislature session of this next, this next year. In addition to that, Jay Stoffel, who is the executive director of the Teacher Retirement Association, came in to talk about the funding that is there and the lack of funding to make sure that that, that teacher retirement program meets the, the promises that were made to those people that have been in the teacher retirement. Last year, there was a proposal that there would be an increase to the teacher, the active teacher pieces and those of us that are in the teacher retirement as well as the district side, and that did not make it through the session. That doesn't mean that there isn't a problem there. And so again, he is going to be working with the legislature to say, you know, we need to come up with a solution. And obviously, there are three solutions. One, the district pays more of it. Two, the active employees pay more of it, or three, those that have retired. And my guess is, in the end, there will be a compromise that will occur and, but hopefully that will be taken care of because the longer you wait, the bigger the gap gets. So I'm, I know that that will be on the minds of this session as we start in, in February.
Okay. How does that affect Peggy when we have to make decisions around that? I mean, can, are there any decisions to be made on our end or do we have to wait for the state to make decisions?
We really do have to wait. And, you know, the lobbying efforts that, that CNA MSD will do is to then be able to say how much money can be put into the, the school district's funding if indeed it becomes part of the school district as well. So again, a lot of it's up in the air and the forecasts are not positive at this point. We obviously will wait for the February forecast and that will again drive this conversation. And again, it could get pushed off. We, you never know. It isn't a funding year. That, that's kind of the, the big deal.
But it's something we need to keep in our magic ball to be thinking about.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. The important future school board dates. The AMSD board meeting will be held January fifth, 2018, seven to nine a.m. at the Ties Conference Center. MSBA Learning to Lead, School Boards Basic Phase One Training, January ninth, 2018, six thirty p.m. at the Minneapolis Hilton. The Second Annual School Board Members of Color Meeting will be held January tenth, four p.m. at the Minneapolis Hilton. Northeast Metro nine sixteen board meeting, January tenth, 2018, six p.m. at Bel Air School in White Bear Lake. MSBA Leadership Conference, which is entitled Student Achievement, Passion, Perseverance, and Possibility. That'll be held January eleventh and twelfth, 2018, at the Minneapolis Convention Center. Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting will be held January seventeenth, six fifteen p.m. at their offices. Okay, and that can.
I know it doesn't mean anything to you, but our next board meeting.
Excuse me. The next Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting will be held January sixteenth, 2018, work session, five thirty p.m. City Hall Conference Room A, Open Forum, seven p.m. City Hall Conference Room A, and the Business Meeting, seven thirty p.m. City Council Chambers. The next Schools for Equity and Education Meeting, February ninth, 2018, nine a.m. to twelve thirty p.m. at the Radisson Hotel in Roseville.
And Marcia, I believe you can tune in on cable channel. Is it fourteen or seventeen in Fridley?
I will, I will do that, definitely. If not, sitting in the audience. I now ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I will second that. There's been a motion by Sampson, seconded by Delvo, to adjourn at eight nineteen p.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. We are adjourned.
Thanks, Chris.